Well, that's great theater for Christmas carol. Friday night was our dinner.
Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, before the start of this regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, we met first at a groundbreaking, was highly attended, it was wonderful, very great experience, very happy that we finally broke ground for the recreation center and the other community park projects that have been long, long coming, twenty years in my, from where I sit, but it's a very, it was a very happy day. And we also met in executive session for a couple of boards and commissions interviews, and we discussed some personnel matters and some litigation matter, and the litigation matter we'll deal with in the new year. Personnel matters will be dealt with by the end of this meeting. So, first thing on the agenda is bittersweet.
You stay. Stay for a while.
It's the retirement of Ryan Mannion from this board. Before I read the proclamation regarding Ryan's twelve years of service to the, to be considered by the board this evening, I want to speak to Ryan's service to the nation. I'm paraphrasing a bit from her. Very impressive website, which reflects Ryan as the impressive and compassionate woman that she is, as she leads a national movement, inspiring audiences from every walk of life, from the military, nonprofit communities, citizen groups, and the corporate world, to become the best versions of themselves through service to others. She speaks to taking our strengths of character to improve personal well-being and create the opportunity for broader change. Ryan's podcast, as a matter of fact, who knew she had a podcast, her message is, "Every human will struggle in life. Our challenge is to struggle well." I'm going to read a paragraph from her website that underscores her work to build character through service. Ryan lost her brother to war, and her mother to cancer, and who's a daughter of a retired Marine. She's a wife and mother of three. She's no stranger to resiliency and how to struggle well with, through life. Now the CEO of one of the nation's leading veterans organizations, the Travis Mannion Foundation, Ryan works to empower veterans, families of fallen heroes, to inspire future generations to change. A highly regarded and sought-after advocate for the military community, she has dedicated her life to honoring servicemen and women who have given their lives in ultimate sacrifice, the families they left behind, and the veterans they served alongside. In addition to dedicating much of her time to service projects across the globe, here's the best part. Ryan also serves as an elected township supervisor. Somebody finish the sentence. Sorry. In her hometown of Doylestown, Pennsylvania. What do you think? Sorry, it's hard not to be emotional. However, I am going to read the proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, Township of Doylestown, County of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, recognizing Ms. Ryan Mannion for her twelve years of service to the Board of Supervisors. Whereas Ms. Mannion was duly elected as a Doylestown Township Supervisor in November of two thousand and eleven, taking office in January two thousand and twelve, and she served as Vice Chairman of the Board of Supervisors from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas during her service, Ms. Mannion has been the Board of Supervisors liaison to the Township's Bike and Hike Committee, Dog Park Advisory Committee, Friends of Kids Castle, Local Traffic Advisory Committee, Parks and Recreation Board, Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board, Telecommunications Advisory Board, Veterans Advisory Committee. And during her tenure, Ms. Mannion saw the addition of bike and hike trails, the installation of bike equipment at Kids Castle, now I'm sorry, installation of play equipment at Kids Castle, the installation of the amphitheater in Central Park, the planting of hundreds of trees, the installation of the Century Trail in Central Park, the completion of the Pebble Ridge Wood Ridge Sewer Project, the installation of public water in the Pebble Ridge Wood Ridge area, the celebration of the Township's bicentennial, the building of the new township municipal building, and the groundbreaking for the, for the Community Recreation, Recreation Center and Park Improvements Project that occurred today. Ms. Mannion, along with her fellow supervisors, achieved these accomplishments during her tenure for the community, and whereas Ms. Mannion has diligently served the Board of Supervisors and the Doylestown Township community, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Doylestown that Ryan Mannion be recognized for her twelve years of service and dedication to, to the community as a member of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors today, this day, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. So, as you know, anyone who leaves here for whatever reason, they get this wonderful presentation through this plaque, nineteenth day of December, two thousand and twenty-three, by the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors, Chief Ryan Mannion, for her twelve years of service and dedication to the Board of Supervisors and community. Thank you. I know you want to say a few things, but the senator is here and, oh, sorry, the senator is here and the representative is here. Do you want to give them an opportunity to speak first?
Sure, yeah, that would be great.
We'll let you talk first.
Yes, we'll be, we'll be brief.
Okay.
But Ryan, it's, it's an honor for both Tim and me to be here tonight to recognize your service to the township. You know, I'm a former township supervisor in Laura Makefield, where I live, and Tim, of course, was on town council in Doylestown Borough. So, we both know well the importance of local office and the fact that you really can make a difference in people's lives. Six years for one term for a supervisor is a long time. We used to make a joke, it wasn't so much a term, it was a sentence. But when you do two of those terms for twelve years, that is indeed dedication to the community. And so, the fact that you were elected both times, obviously, is a recognition by your constituents that they understood your dedication to the township. And I'm not going to repeat what Chair Lyons just said in terms of the accomplishments, because what you and the rest of the board have been able to do in those twelve years is a lot. And today, as, as Barbara mentioned, we were all here earlier today to break ground, at least symbolically, they didn't let us actually shovel the dirt, for the new community center. And that is a legacy that you can be proud of, because when the ribbon is cut on that in about a year, people will begin to come to that, and it will foster a greater sense of community here in Doylestown, and I'm sure a lot of great memories will be forged there. So, I want to thank you for your service to the, to the community, to the township. And I have a plaque from the State Senate recognizing your service over these twelve years that I'd like to present to you now. Thank you.
And again, not to repeat Chair Lyons' really, really wonderful comments on service. I certainly know how, how difficult it is to serve in elected office, especially at local government, and you've done so much on so many different levels. It's very, very, very appreciative to be able to give you this citation on behalf of the Pennsylvania State House, so.
Thank you so much.
All right, I will, I will be brief. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the recognition. You know, twelve years ago, I took an oath to serve as a Doylestown Township Supervisor, and tonight, I'm going to share a little secret. I had absolutely no idea what I was doing at the time. But I did know a couple of things. I knew that I wanted to make a difference. I knew that I wanted to serve my community, and I knew that I wanted to make decisions based on the best outcome for Doylestown Township, not a political party. During my time as a township supervisor, some big things have happened. This building that we stand in tonight was just an idea. And as my time comes to an end, I'm proud of the role I played in bringing the new community center and park renovations to where they are. Today, we broke ground, and my only request is that I am invited back for the ribbon cutting.
You will be.
There, thank you. There have been many different people who have sat behind the dais with me over the years, and I've enjoyed working alongside almost all of them. I'm proud of the work that we've accomplished together to make Doylestown Township an amazing place to live. The past few years have proved to be some of the most challenging times we have faced. From COVID- nineteen to political theatrics that disrupted the important work we have been tasked to do, things were just not easy. So, I would like to thank my fellow supervisors here tonight for the way we were able to rise above all the chaos and get things done. Jen and Dan, we come from different sides of the aisle, and we didn't always agree on everything, but we did agree on the most important thing, and that's the betterment of this community. I thank you and appreciate both of you for being open and willing to hear different viewpoints, and I hope that I was able to do the same with you. Thank you for both, thank you both for how you represent Doylestown Township. Chief Logan, it's been awesome to watch you protect this town with dignity and precision, always putting the safety and welfare of our residents first and foremost. Jeff, our township solicitor, the voice of reason, who no matter what, provided us with calm counsel and guidance. And Stephanie, the unsung hero of this township, always there where the rubber hit the road, ready to tackle problems and find solutions. This community would not be what it is today without you. To the township staff and police department and the incredible volunteers that I've had the opportunity to work with over the past twelve years, thank you for your unparalleled commitment to Doylestown Township. And finally, Barb, I was barely thirty years old when I joined this board, young and inexperienced. Barb, your mentorship is why I leave this board feeling like I made a bit of a difference. You were there every step of the way over the last twelve years to guide me, answer every silly question I had, and most importantly, set the example. I cannot thank you enough for the mentorship that you've provided to me, not just on this board, but in life. I ask just one thing as I step off this board, that you continue with the same dedication to the integrity of our community that we have over the last several years. This is certainly a bittersweet day for me, but I'm grateful for the last twelve years I've had serving the residents of Doylestown Township, and from the bottom of my heart, I thank you all. Thank you.
Well, follow that. Okay, well, we can, with Senator Sanzario and Representative Brennan. Thank you, Ryan. Oh, yeah, good idea.
Actually be good. Let's do that.
Like my tie?
Yeah.
You can tell it's old how white it is, though. But how many Christmas ties do people have? Thank you. Good to see you.
May I? Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you, sorry.
So, I only come here when we have good news. So, if you ever see me and it's something bad, that's, you know, we know it's going to be a problem, but it's a, it's always a pleasure to come here to Doylestown Township. I love this community. This space is a great space, and obviously, I'm grateful for the work that this board does. I'm also grateful to have a partner in Harrisburg in Tim Brennan, your relatively new state rep, who lives in, in the borough. But we've been working together on a number of projects, and I'm happy to report tonight that we were able to work together to get something that this board advocated for in Harrisburg, and that's two very important grants that will help the township moving forward.
Excuse me, can I call up the two individuals here?
Please do.
Keith Haas and Joe Van Houten, can you please come forward? Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, as I said earlier today, we broke ground on the community center, and that's a, that's a fun thing everyone sees, and it's, it's going to be a great place for the community to gather. This, these are grants that go to infrastructure investment and water and sewer projects, not things that people ordinarily look at and say, oh, that's, you know, something I'm thinking about all the time, but they're critically important to the health of the community and to the, to the well-being in the long run of the community. So, I'm happy to say that with the township's advocacy and this board's advocacy, Representative Brennan and I were able to secure about one point nine million dollars in grants that will improve the water and sewer infrastructure for Doylestown Township. That'll break down as follows. The Doylestown Township Municipal Authority will receive one point four million for the Northern Regional Water System Transmission Manes Improvement Project. The project will upgrade existing infrastructure to provide water more efficiently to residents in Doylestown Township, as well as Plumstead and New Britton Borough. The project will also provide the opportunity for property owners with contaminated wells to connect to public water. And as someone who has done a great deal of work in the environmental field in my life, I can tell you how important that is, particularly for those families who may not have good water supplies right now. The second grant is for two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and that is that the Doylestown Township Municipal Authority will also receive, and it is for the Forest Park Regional Water System Interconnection. So, I'm just, these were awarded today by the Commonwealth Financing Authority. Again, thanks to the township for having made these applications, and Representative Brennan and I, working together with our colleagues in Harrisburg, to have these grants awarded, and we're very pleased today to be here to present that. So, congratulations.
And, and I just want to add another thank you. Senator Sanzario was here earlier today, so, and if he's here on good times, he's been here twice today with, with quite a bit of good news. So, the, these are, these are, you know, I, I come from local government. I spent seven years as a councilperson in Doylestown, and I know how important it is for, for these types of grants to come in, to, to narrow your budgets and, and to make things happen. These are important grants. They do great work. The Water Authority's doing great work to, you know, work on your, your, your emergency backup systems to, you know, to, to have better supply systems, and, and also to hit some of these, these other municipalities, bring in new customers or areas to bring in new customers. So, these are all things that are benefiting, benefiting your water supply. So, these are, these are great projects, and, you know, I, we spent a lot of long nights in the Appropriations Committee. I was lucky enough to be on the Appropriations Committee, and it was an awfully long year that went from all the way into December this year. So, it is nice to be coming home with some good news for, for, for my constituents, and, and very much appreciate being here tonight. Thank you.
Kevin Green, can you come up as well?
Yeah, Kevin, come on up.
Yeah, to arrest the board and put the DTA.
Scooch together, scooch together.
You took your mask off. Now, you know, Senator, I always say when you, I didn't hear you. Well, he turns around. Senator, you know, what I always, what I always say to you when you come here, you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting. I know you're busy. I know you're busy. Oh, yes. Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, well, we have a drawing now for the Capitol campaign. Who's going to? How about one of the Mannion girls? So, we're drawing three tickets, three, three things. One for an electric bike, flyers tickets, and five nights in a Florida villa. So, you get to draw all three.
Oh, that's a good one. Um, oh, sorry. Thank you, Dan. It is, looks like Byron Snyder of Chalfont, PA.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You don't have to be here to win.
Because we have names and numbers on them.
We'll call you.
Shuffle that up. Oh, this one doesn't have a, okay. John, can you write that? They don't have, they don't have any information. Yeah. Joan Slaughter, or Salter. So.
Is there a telephone number?
No, there's not. That'll be fun.
Congrats, Joan.
We have a number at the bottom.
Where did they win, Stephanie?
That is the flyers tickets.
Okay.
All right. And then the last one will be for the electric bike.
Ooh.
Oh, this is going to be hard. I'm, it's Bryson.
Oh, that's going to be difficult.
Yeah, let's try and, we, it just has.
Yeah, just has one name on it. Let's pick a backup one, just in case we can't find out who that person is.
Oh, yeah. Steve White.
Oh, all right. Steve White is our former chief of police.
Former chief of police. Well, drive nicely in the electric.
Oh, man. I love it.
On the run.
Thank you for your assistance in drawing. No one can complain that there was a fix in it anyway. All right, thank you. Next thing on the agenda, public comment for agenda items only. Did I miss something?
Oh, Brixmore, I'm sorry. I didn't do that on purpose, Bill. I didn't, I swear.
Bill's here from Brixmore to make a brief presentation.
Okay.
And he was also at our groundbreaking.
Yes, my pleasure.
So, that means one thing, as far as I'm concerned. There's something with a name on it in our rec center. I already told him that.
All right. All right. My name is Bill Grimal. I'm with Brixmore Property Group, Vice President of Redevelopment, and Brixmore is the owner of Barn Plaza.
Speak more into there.
And thank you, excuse me, for allowing us to come in and give a brief presentation of what's going on at Barn Plaza. I think you all realize Marshalls has left, and we were lucky enough to bring Whole Foods in, and Barnes and Noble will be right next to them. So, that's one good thing. Another situation that came upon us is Regal leaving us, and, you know, much of the theater industry is, you know, in turmoil, such that we don't think we're going to replace it with a theater, such that we have to come up with other plans. Also, we had Applebee's clothes on us. So, we've had a lot of turmoil there, but we're going to turn it into a lot of good news. So, we're very excited to present the plan up here of what we're looking to do with Barn Plaza. As you can see, and I'll move the cursor over, we've got Whole Foods and Barnes and Noble right next door. But then also, we'll be creating a multi-tenant building out where the Applebee's sits right now with a, and we're very close to leases, but I can't say with who at this point for that entire building. And one of the tenants would be a drive-through, but it would be online ordering, such that it wouldn't be a big demand of stacking of cars and so forth. And then over on the other side, where Regal Building still sits, we're going to be putting multi-b buildings there, slightly less square footage than what is there today. And we will, though, be looking for zoning relief in different matters for this project. So, we'll have to go to zoning before coming back to the Planning Commission and this board. And I guess I'll turn it over to Greg and Brian to give you a little more detail on what relief we'll be needing. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thanks, Greg. I totally forgot to hit on, this is the rendering of the, what the Whole Foods will look like. It's a major upgrade to the facades, and we're also going to continue on to, from Kohl's, not touching Kohl's, but everything from Kohl's on down to the end where the Starbucks used to be, which, that's another national tenant that we'll be putting in there very shortly. We're going to be renovating all the facades to come up and be more commensurate with the look of the Whole Foods. And then, as far as, this is the, just a concept drawing of that building that would be going in the Applebee's area. There'll be a lot of wood and, you know, features that kind of lend itself to the name Barn, okay, still. And this is down, that L-shaped building that you saw on the plan, very upscale, a little more contemporary, but again, the flavor of wood and other finishes. And this is the drive-through at the other end, all the way down at the end. If you're facing the property on the left-hand side, look at what that building would look like. And one of the other things that we'll be looking to do, considering we've got a lot more tenants now, Regal left, that was one tenant, they had a sign, but we're going to probably have, you know, ten or so tenants in that area, plus the outbuilding and so forth. So, we're going to be looking to update the signage to be more commensurate with the look of the center and give identity to the smaller tenants in there. Okay? And now, we'll give this over to Brian to talk about the variances.
Good evening, everyone. And I'm just going to go to, I'm Brian Conlon, the civil engineer working with Brixmore. And quickly, as Bill mentioned, we will be coming before your zoning hearing board in January. And some of the variances that we need, I'm not going to go in detail, but on the screen you see kind of an overlay in blue and red. This is the theater area. The blue is the existing building and the red is the three proposed buildings. I want to write one right. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going the wrong way. Thank you. Sorry. The blue and red overlay there. And again, basically, we need some relief for setbacks, the front and rear. And we show this just to show that the existing building in blue is kind of closer to the roadway than our proposed buildings. So while we do need the relief, it's actually a better condition than the existing barn theater. So we need some setback relief, as I mentioned. We need a slight impervious coverage, less than 1% relief we'll be seeking. The signage that Bill mentioned earlier, and then just some parking relief that we'll be looking for. But in general, that's the overall proposed plan.
Okay. Thank you. While we look forward to the rest of it.
Yeah, at this stage, do you envision the current theater being retrofitted or being completely torn down and re-built?
Both the theater, if Bill didn't mention, both the theater and the Applebee's building will be demolished and new structures built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys done?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now, public comment on agenda items. Okay, hearing number moving on. Two announcements. The, we're going to be closed Monday, December 25th, and Monday, January 1st, and Monday, January 15th. Now, Monday, January 15th is Martin Luther King Day. The other two are pretty obvious. The Board of Supervisors reorganization meeting is Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, at 5:00 PM, although there might be a change in that time. We'll hear that later today, tonight. The Board of Auditors reorganization meeting is Wednesday, January 3rd, at 10:00 AM. The next meeting of this board will be held on Tuesday, January 16th, at 7:00 PM. Applications are now being accepted for Doylestown Township Boards and Commissions for the following Agriculture Security Area Advisory Committee, Historical Architectural Review Board, Environmental Advisory Council, and the Shade Tree Commission, Finance Committee, Pension Advisory Committee, Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board, Telecommunications Advisory Board, Veterans Advisory Committee. And if you're interested in any of these boards or commissions, you can visit our website, doylstownpa.org. Doylestown Township is the drop-off spot for Bucks County Housing Groups Food and Supply Collection. Donations can be dropped off at the township building Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. And the collections will take place from now until January 10th, excuse me, January 10th. Christmas tree drop-off, we haven't even had Christmas yet, and we're dropping off the trees. I always hate when this happens. We'll drop off the trees, New Britain Road entrance to Central Park anytime during December and January. Leaf and yard recycling, waste recycling is a third Saturday of each month, 9:00 AM to 11:00. And the first and fourth Tuesday of the month, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And the drop-off site is located at the New Britain Road entrance to Central Park. Gift-giving ideas, donate money to the recreation center, and we will give you a name on something. So that's one gift item you can donate, right, in memory of somebody or in honor of someone. Park and Recreation Program gift certificates, Legacy Bench Program, and mural prints. The civilian response to active shooter events, free training is being hosted by Sergeant Stitch. And for more information, go to jstitch@doylstownpa.org. Keep up today with township news and events. Sign up for the e-news at doylstownpa.org. It comes out into your inbox every Friday at 4:00 PM. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November 21st, 2023 meeting. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes.
Yes.
Any changes, corrections? Hearing that is our motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Next item on the agenda is, we have a letter from Vanguard, which, by the way, I'm going to say publicly was very unprofessional.
Unfortunately, we've received notice from Vanguard, who handles the investment advising of the township's defined benefit pension plans for both police and non-uniform, and also custodial services for our pensioners. The board may recall, we worked with the PAC back in '21, selecting them as our advisor. And unfortunately, they've recently been, this section has been purchased by an organization called Mercer, who does not work on or serve public pension plans. This sale and the investment advisory services that we've had will go away at the end of February of this year. So we need to work with PAC to select a new investment advisory and custodial. You know, in essence, we can keep our money there. It'll be parked, but we will have no advisory services. And so I think we need to work quickly to find a new investment advisor for the two pension plans, and also our custodial services. And.
Do you need a motion for that?
Well, we're gonna need a motion. We've been talking to PAC, and Ken and I pulled out the proposals that we received, and also our RFP from last time. And we'd like to clean that up and put that out. We have to advertise it as part of the bid process under Act 44, and bring you back proposals for new investment advisory services. And we will try to act as quickly as we possibly can, working with the PAC. I believe Ed Denton, Chair of the PAC, is here tonight. I thought I saw him earlier. But that is the goal. So at this point, if the board is so inclined, we would want the authorization to move forward in releasing the proposals and seeking RFPs from appropriate companies.
Yes. Your motion? God bless you.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And I say professional, we got two notices without letterheads and very short time to do what we have to do. I think that was very wrong. Just saying. All right. Next item. Solicitor, anything?
Nothing at this point. I will have some comments later.
Township engineer?
Yes, I'm here requesting approval tonight as part of the Ashbridge at Furlong project. They need to submit a planning module requirements for their eventual sewer connection. As part of that, if you recall, we requested that they install low-pressure force main system along the same route so that we could eventually connect in residents that are along that path. So as part of that, we met with DEP, and they requested that we fill out certain sections of the planning module as part of their application. So tonight, I'm just requesting that I get approval to proceed with that process and work with Stephanie to get the correct documentation signed from the agencies and get that submitted in support of the overall plan for that project.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm generally supportive of this. The one thing that stood out to me in the notes from Panoni was that the homeowners will not be required to connect to the system until their property is sold. I don't believe we've ever made that a requirement, that they have to connect if they sell their house.
Correct. They need, probably we would follow what we did with Pebble Ridge, Woodridge. So if they have a malfunctioning, failing on lot septic system, and the line is there, they would require at that point in time to connect. And obviously, if anyone wants to, once that line is there. And obviously, there's no cost of the line to any residents who abut that line. It's all being installed by the developer.
When you're getting ready to have that construction begun, you ought to have an ordinance reflecting what you just said concerning this part of the township and connecting to this line.
Right. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page and consistent across the township on that piece.
Okay, you gonna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Aye.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That is all.
Great. Thank you. Any else, engineer? No? Chief?
Yes, before I get to the agenda item, I'd like to make a couple of comments towards Ryan. The police department's had a, over my tenure, has had a very good relationship with every single board member that's come through this building. I've been here 36 years, and I'd like to thank Ryan for your level of cooperation and your interaction with the police department. It does, definitely does not go unnoticed. You've always been there a person to lean on, talk to personally, professionally. I hope in my 36 years here, I've accomplished a small portion of what you've already done in your tenure with here and with the Travis Mannion Foundation. It's just unbelievable. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you've done for the police department.
Thank you, chief.
As far as the agenda item here tonight, it's, one of the good things we get to do tonight is, we had an opportunity to hire an individual back in, I guess, December of '22. Officer Brett Iannone is here. Brett, if you could stand up for a second. We hired Brett in December of 2022, and he came highly recommended from the Central Bucks Regional Police Department, where he was working part-time. When you, when you get that type of recommendation and you come to a police department that's got, that has high standards and only accepts the best candidates, it's tough shoes to follow and to get into. He was placed on the squad with Sergeant Stitch and was trained by his field training officer, Officer Carr. He was also another very good employee here. Officer Iannone has completed his one year of field training service effective December 28th. And he exemplifies everything I ever asked for in an officer. And Brett, I thank you for that. At this time, I'd like to recommend that Officer Iannone be granted tenure from the Board of Supervisors as a full-time police officer with Doylestown Township, effective December 28th, 2023.
All right. I'll move the motion that Brett is going to only go from probationary status to full-fledged officer. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Welcome, for real. Is your family here?
You're kidding me. There's police families here. Officer Carr's here as well, and Lieutenant Ziegler. That's all I have.
Thank you. That's good. Thank you. There's a lot of emotion going on in this place tonight. Director of Operations, don't you have me crying too?
No. No. I will be brief. I have a few items. My first item is Central Park Stream Bank Restoration Project request to advertise. If the board recalls, this has been a project that's been part of our MS4 permit for a number of years. This project needs to be completed by December 2024, has a requirement of our permit issued by the state, and basically is a stream bank restoration project that encompasses about 1,300 linear feet of stream bank that runs from Kids Castle all the way down to Turk Road behind our property here. This project in June was, the engineering and the construction documentation piece was awarded to Gilmore Associates to complete the bid package and plans. They outlined the schedule. Today, we're at the point where we're ready to go to bid. The project is estimated at one, I'm gonna round to just $1.2 million. And there's $1.5 million in the 2024 budget for this project. Again, it is a requirement for our permit, so we must do it. And we tried to push off as long as we can, and we're at that point. So I'm just asking for the board's approval to go to advertisement for this project, please.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize the advertising?
I just want to, sorry, just add on to what Mr. Tomko was saying about this being a requirement. This is a state requirement that we have this permit. It's not, I mean, obviously, we want to take care of our streams and all that, but we are required to spend money to do these kinds of projects.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. My second one is, as we've been, I've been discussing a number of times at the board meetings now, and as well as part of our 24 budget, we're doing some modifications to our existing Public Works building. It used to house our salt for our winter road maintenance, and we are moving forward with some engineering to fit out this space for our Parks Department, which it will hopefully in '24 be growing with the new building coming along, as well as additional employees, as we've requested. This, this basically is a proposal, it was prepared by Panoni, to prepare, design, do some design development, construction documents, as well as handle the construction phase. The total right now is $12,500 for Panoni to complete those services. I'm asking for the board's approval for their scope of work.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Community Recreation Center Flooring and Gym Sports Equipment Proposal.
Yes. As the building is moving forward here, we all along had discussed that we were going to engage directly with vendors for certain items of the building. This includes the flooring in the building, includes the gym flooring, the flooring in the multipurpose room, as well as the hallways and common areas, and as well as we, the company that we received proposals from, and also other companies that we solicited proposals from, three in total. We asked them to also provide the, basically gym equipment that is attached to the building, that is basically basketball, backboards, the divider curtain, as well as the padding. We need to do this in order to keep the project moving forward. They need to basically do the shop drawings for the building and keep on schedule. So I'm asking for the board's approval to award the flooring and the gym equipment, as indicated in the attached proposal from All Sports Enterprises, totaling $392,200. That's $210,420 for the flooring, and $181,780 for the gym equipment.
And before I call a question, Ryan, did you check with the DAA whether they are approving this floor? They've approved the floor.
That's good.
For the 100th time. And I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Anything else?
I'm gonna have Mr. Wallace come up here and address our request.
The copier?
Our copier lease.
What I'm looking for from the board is approval of the three-year lease with Altech Imaging Services. I had three companies solicit the township for copier services because the contract expired in November, and we're on a month-to-month lease. So the three proposals were in my memo, and I would recommend, as I said in my memo, that we go with Altech Imaging Services.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to approve Altech Business Systems?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Ken? You good? Anything else?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, township manager?
You have a request for us to send the 2012 Chevy 2500 truck with over 100, 2,000 miles on it to auction.
That was one of my favorites. Okay, there's a motion to send it to auction. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That and a gator. All right, next item on the agenda, supervisors' comments. Jen, you want to go first?
Sure. I have a lot I'd like to say, but I'm gonna have to limit it a little bit. I'm under the weather. But Ryan, I just want to say what a pleasure it has been to work with you over the past six years for me. You know, you've been an inspiration in how you handle things on this, in this board. The decisions you make are always well thought out and in the best interest of our township, and I really do appreciate it.
Thanks, Jen.
The one agenda item that I have is, for the reorganization meeting, we have a couple new, newly elected, there's a supervisor and an auditor. And I thought it would be nice to be able to bump the meeting up till 6 o'clock to allow, in the case that they want to have family, friends, that type of thing. So I thought I'd have a discussion with you to see if that was something that everybody thought would be.
You want to put that in form of a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we change the time to 6:00 PM on January 2nd.
I'll second that motion. You don't, you don't know how guys want to meet. Don't care.
Either time's fine by me. So I'll make the motion to change. Either time's fine by me, so I'll make the motion to change to 6:00. Or Jen, did you make the motion?
I made the second.
Whoever did.
I'm seconded.
Okay.
All right, we're good. All in favor, we're all, we're good. We're going 6:00 on January 2nd.
Perfect, thank you.
No problem. Anything, Dan?
Yeah, you know, a lot of love for Ryan tonight, and I'll add to that. Ryan, as you say, we haven't always seen eye to eye on certain things, but I have the utmost respect for, when push comes to shove, it's for the best for the township, not for some ideological win. It's because we have a difference of opinions of what's best for the township going forward, and that we can work together to find a way that works for us, but more importantly, works for the township. So that's appreciated, and don't be a stranger around township stuff. So other business things I have, we had a, in our executive session earlier this evening, we met with Mr. Michael Garrick, who was interested in joining our Public Water and Sewer Board, and I'd like to make a motion to appoint him to that board.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, as far as my bike and hike update, nothing significant to report on that. We had our meeting this morning, and projects continue to move along. The last thing I'd like to bring up is just, at the end of the year, I like to take time to make sure to recognize all of our staff and all of our volunteers for everything they do for this township. Some of the stuff is visible, we see every day, our police department comes to mind. Sometimes people don't want the police to be as visible if you're going a little too fast in certain areas. But, you know, they're out there helping our people, but there's also a lot of subtle things you can see around our township, when a pothole gets filled in, when bushes get trimmed back. Those are all little things that our staff are doing to keep this township in good condition. And then, of course, there's countless unseen hours here in the Township Building and the office for just making things run. I, we're the faces, the public faces of the township, but we cannot run this township without our, our staff and our volunteers. So it's greatly appreciated, and especially our volunteers, some of which have spent years and decades working on projects for us. The community center is a great example of just tireless dedication from some of our volunteers to get that over the Board. The work that our telecommunications advisory board does, water and sewer, I could go on listing everything, but I'll wrap it up. I just thank you all for everything you've done for us this past year, and I look forward to working with them all again next year.
Thanks, Dan. I attended the Santa, Santa in the Park on December 9th. It was so much fun, so fabulous. Cue the B-roll, please. I have a note here from Blythe, who can't be here tonight, Blythe Kelly, who is our Chairman of the Park Board, and she says, "I just wanted to thank you all so very much for making our Santa event a huge success. Your time and efforts are much appreciated. We went through 380 cups of hot chocolate, 400 cookies, 220 candy canes, and I was informed by Jim that the EAC made 60 bird feeders. I'm certain, I'm certainly awesome weather, as well as our new signage in the park, an increased social media presence accounted for the increase in attendance. Although I offered Mr. and Mrs. Claus a ride home, they decided to walk up Wells Road for the shock factor of passing cars. A neighbor captured this shot, so funny." That's cute. So, thank you, Ed, and Caitlin back there. And that's all I have. All right, next item on the agenda is this table. All right.
You've found that to be your own committee, just to pay for something. Last department, and has been reviewed by the planning commission. And I believe your planning commission has recommended the Board proceed with approving the ordinance as it's been amended or tweaked, I guess for lack of a better word. And I believe that Kelly McGowan is here just to give you a brief overview of the changes that have been made that are not been substantive, they are more making the ordinance a better ordinance and making it a little more restrictive, actually.
Yeah, Jeff, I think that's fair. Thanks very much. Board members, good evening, providing you with an update on a continuation of the hearing from last month. As Jeff indicated, we did appear before the Planning Commission last evening, presented the Planning Commission with also an update on the, as Jeff says, tweaks to the ordinance. Those tweaks include some definitional updates to the ordinance, the most notable of them being, you'll recall the conversation at your planning commission with respect to walkability. As you know, walkability is one of the critical elements to this ordinance, so we've provided some additional definition there to confirm that. We've also tweaked, confirmed some of the language, some clarification points that were raised in the technical review comments from the Bucks County Planning Commission, and that really does cover, you know, as Jeff said, the minor modifications that were made to the, to the ordinance. The second thing that I'd like to note that we did as the topic of conversation at the hearing was to engage with Doylestown Borough. As you know, Doylestown Borough has vested interest in the Broad Street corridor, as is impacted by this ordinance, by this township ordinance. As you also know specifically with respect to the property at 280, there is a borough component to that property, that being the .8 acres that fronts on Broad Street. So in connection with those discussions, we both reviewed the ordinance. We also talked about the future use and the disposition of that borough property, and how that, and how that would work. The result of those discussions is actually quite positive. We have a proposed dog park fronting on Broad Street that will not only be an amenity and be usable by these residents, but also to the public. So given the location of this property, it is across from Broad Commons, so we are very hopeful that that addition will not only mitigate any impact on Doylestown Borough, but will also be a, an asset to the community. And that is really the entirety of the update that we have for you. As Jeff noted, your planning commission did pass along a positive recommendation last evening, and we would ask the Board to move it along tonight.
Okay, any questions from the Board?
If the Board was inclined to proceed, you would approve the ordinance that was presented to the Doylestown Township Planning Commission last night.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second.
Before we call a question, does anyone from the Borough wish to speak to this at all? I see some folks here from Doylestown Borough.
We just appreciate you collaborating and helping with the town.
Thank you, Mr. Allinger. He thanked us, he thanked us for the opportunity to collaborate, since he wasn't on mic. So, thank you and welcome again. All right, so there's motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Ms. McGowan.
Board members, thank you very much. Ryan, thank you.
Okay, that's the bit, that's the whole, that's like half the agenda.
More than half.
I mean, really, it's three pages I turn here. Okay, final budget, that's another biggie. Kind of banner night. Okay. Stephanie?
The Board spent much time from the spring until the fall going over the 2024 budget, working with our Finance Committee, our Finance Department, Budget Analyst, and Township Staff from all the departments. The major budget highlights are that it is a balanced budget of $15 million in revenue and 15.2 in expenses. We are using 0.1 million in reserves. We will have a slight tax increase to 2.7 mils, 2.3 is for our community recreation park improvement project, and 0.4 for bridges repairs for one year. Current 23 millage is 15.450, and we will go to 18.155 in '24. Growth in capital spending from 6.1 to 20.6 million, and that encompasses some of our larger projects, again, the community rec center and park improvement of 12.4. Trails construction, which of course is a $2.8 million grant for Safe Routes to School, and the stormwater mitigation project, which Dave talked about earlier, which we have in for 1.6. Again, we have strong results of reserves and the necessary resources to continue to provide the appropriate services to the residents, and of course, as a double A1 rated community. We also have provided the Board with the, what we're referring to as we started a couple of years ago, the Budget in Brief. We have on your table tonight, and will be out in the back shortly, the visual highlights of the Budget in Brief. I would like to thank the Finance Department, our new Assistant Finance Director, Anne Marie Dobson, and Andrea Suston, our Assistant Manager, who put this document together. We will also be putting it in RE Friday News this week. It addresses the highlights of the budget, and they brought in, incorporated a lot of photos and interesting information that brings the budget from the numbers into reality. And I would just like to thank the Board and all the departments and our Finance Committee for working together to bring forth the 2024 budget at this time.
Okay, and this is actually fun to read. I mean, who wants to read a budget? But this Budget in Brief with the pictures and everything, it's really quite interesting to read, so do encourage everyone to take a look. So we need a motion, we first approve the increase in the tax millage?
You approve the budget first.
First, you approve the budget.
All right, is there a motion to approve the budget for 2024, as detailed by Ms. Mason?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And is there a motion to increase the millage?
Fix the millage.
Fixing, fixing the rate by the resolution.
Fixing the rates.
Fixing the tax rates.
Wait, thank you. Is there, is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item on the agenda, Township Manager's Contract. We met.
On the detail budget.
Acknowledging receipt of it.
Sorry. You just jumped on my throat. I was trying to get through one meeting where I didn't skip something, and it didn't work. Okay, we received the Doylestown Township Municipal Authority budget. Thank you very much.
All it is, is you have, they have to find a copy to the Board, and you acknowledge receipt, finished.
Yeah, nicely done, guys. Oh, I didn't know anything about it. That's good. And then, next is the Manager's Contract. We spoke about it in an executive session, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Manager's, Stephanie's contract for another two years. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. And Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Sewer Project Loan Closeout. This is another big day.
Yes, it is. Tomorrow, we will close the loan for the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Sewer Project. It's all electronic, but just one more authorization, because we had to move the date and everything till tomorrow at 11:00 AM, yes, so that Barbara and I, whoever, can sign those documents tomorrow, just in case they ask. We have it on file that she was authorized to sign everything electronically.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2552, authorizing me to sign whatever I might have to sign tomorrow for the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Sewer Closeout Project?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, good. Treasures Report, am I in the right?
Yep.
Okay, still good. Okay, Treasures Report, November 21st, 2023.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, I just think, never mind, it's a four now. November 21st, Bills List.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Doylestown Township Municipal Offices will be closed Monday, December 25th for Christmas, and then Monday, January 1st for New Year's Day, in case I wasn't clear before, I probably wasn't. And then Monday, January 15th for observance of Martin Luther King Day, King Day, and then Board of Supervisors Reorganization Meeting is Tuesday, January 2nd at 6:00 PM. The Board of Auditors Reorganization Meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 3rd at 10:00 AM. The next meeting of the Board of Supervisors, regular Board of Supervisors, is on Tuesday, January 16th at 7:00 PM. And applications are being accepted for various boards and commissions. Go to DoylestownPA.org to see what they are. And, and then the rest of it, Christmas tree drop-off, leaf, yard, waste recycling, all that I said earlier, we won't go into. Gift ideas, I already said that, too. And then, what I do want to say, again, the civilian response to active shooter events, CRACE is called, free training contact, contact is Sergeant Stitch at JStitch@doylestownPA.org. And go check your inbox for Township News signup. Any public comment, not agenda item. Nope. Hearing none, Ryan, will you do the honors?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Yes.
Happy holidays.
Goodbye, Ryan.
Thank you, Jen.
And Ryan, just for you, because we're gonna miss you, there are documents to be signed.
Oh, thank you. Can't wait.
Why is Ryan heading after her car already?
I was hoping.
No, you don't.
No.
Not really.
I, I, I just said.
Good signing all the way down there, Jen?
I was gonna land base them.
I've heard enough about.
Go away.
You wanna start the twos?
Well.
Man, he's there.